I'm going to go to you, Councilor Exner. I do want to direct, though, Council to off of our agenda. The very last item is a letter from ODOT that is on there of a commitment level for the lights, for the ATC controls. They go through and even list the intersections in which they would do it. And I believe there's a timeline as well. So I just, I want, wanted to direct Council to that. And then, Councilor Exner, just really quick, you know, on relationship with ODOT, I would argue that over the last year and a half, two years, we have dramatically gotten more from ODOT. One is, as you talk about the Vista Loop, improve the Vista Loop project, well, one is, you know, they sent their executive team to come out and meet with us about it, go through their timeline. We did have a problem with the financing and then they did secure, I believe it was almost $2 million, in additional state funds to go towards that project. I wasn't here for previous councils with some of the negotiations with 211 transfer and on the controllers. So I can only speak to my personal experience, but working with ODOT staff and Ryan Winchimer, who's our region director, has been nothing but a positive experience for me. And so, you know, I definitely, I hear you. I hear some of the past investments that Councilor Pete still talked about the city making to make this impossible and then them not coming forward, right? Some of it is, is playing the new guy card and trying to push a positive relationship. But I do think we need to put on a positive attitude and lenses with working with ODOT as a strategic partner. And I do believe we can continue to have a stronger relationship with them.
I have one question, Stan, on that. Thank you for bringing it up. Those streetlights were only going to be in the couplets, the downtown. Why not all the way down to Orient? And I'm confused because we gave them fiber and conduit all the way. So why are those not all part of the negotiation? I thought they were until I read saying, things saying only from bluff to tonight.
I don't have an answer for that.
We can check with them. I can't recall the exact answer. It may have to do with what those signals are capable of, what the technology is, or they're focusing on the couplet on this phase or something. But I can get that answer for you.
Appreciate that because not only did we give them that, not only did we give them that, but we also, they tapped into our conduit without even asking or getting the permits or any of that, you know, they just kind of took it upon themselves after we, you know, and we're like, why is that track hole out there on the weekend digging in? They just tied into it, even though we were giving, you know, so anyways, I know those are connected and they should be included in this. I'd like to know why not.
Councilor Exner?
I'll keep it short since we seem to be going long on this one. I'm going to ignore all my comments about the timelines and such because I know we do have that agenda on the end. But I think it's really crucial that we do something positive and intentionally with ODOT, with our partnership. Maybe you're seeing an improvement. I'm not seeing it right now. And I appreciate the fact that I'm not involved in a lot of different meetings, but history has shown me that it's been a little bit tough to get ODOT to follow through on their jobs. And maybe it's the upper management, maybe it's the fact that they don't think that Sandy's that important or not because we are a smaller piece of the pie when it comes to dealing with Portland and so on. But I think we really do need to make an intensive focused look at trying to keep this relationship working. I'm also agreement. I think this is not good to have us in an adversarial and probably isn't recognized that way with a lot of their particular planners. But I got to say, I just haven't had a chance to be real positive about their accomplishment rate, their timelines, their interest in being able to interact with us. Maybe the staff is doing a better job than I'm seeing, but I struggle with that. But we want to make sure that it's positive. We got to be involved with these people. So let's make this work. Then I'm done.
Sounds good. All right.
Trying to smile.
I love you, Councilor Exner. Any other comments for discussion on this or we feel good? The next time you see it, you're going to be voting probably. So. Okay. All right. Great. Well, with that, I'm going to go ahead and close this work session and we will, why don't we recess until we'll go at 7:07, give people some time to go to the restroom and then we'll start a meeting adjourned.
This is to be placed underground. So if you drive around town, there's new Sandy Net utility boxes everywhere. There's new PGE transformer boxes everywhere. And so I think that's the distinction is that we can't, we can require the transmission lines to be underground, but we can't require something of these telecommunications agencies any different than any other utility within the city limits.
But none of the other utilities, we're talking about somewhere around refrigerator size boxes hanging from our poles or I assume an out of the way little corners of people's property.
The, if you go around downtown and on Highway 26, the utility boxes for the intersection control panels, those are about the size of refrigerators. And those are installed and since I've worked here by ODOT and those are above ground.
But they've been able to find a place to put them on the ground in, I guess it's not obstructing locations because all those that I'm seeing in downtown Sandy are, you can get your wheelchair by them, certainly people walking by them. But I guess I'm thinking that if we move to pole hanging process and as I understand it, some of these 5Gs got to be put fairly close together. I could see a number of those refrigerators hanging from the poles might be pretty visually pretty rough looked at. So is there no place to put them in like the downtown in a place? There's these strips usually where they got grass, put them in those kinds of places rather than on the poles? Would we have any choices to decide how to make them less visually in our face?
Um, let me double check the design standards resolution.
Maybe this conversation will be in, in that particular area. I'm in favor of the ordinance as it is. Maybe we should move this to the design standards conversation.
And I would just, you know, say, I think Kelly's point is well taken as well. This is one of these areas that's evolving seemingly by the week, depending on how the FCC is looking at certain things. There are rules and decisions that are coming out. That week might be an exaggeration, but honestly, it's happening really quickly. So I think maybe, you know, from the city's point of view and remembering that this is sort of based right now on the, on the LOC model and kind of the, maybe the most robust approach that, that local jurisdictions are taking, at least in Oregon, is to try to get something in place, recognizing that as the weeks and months go by, there's probably going to be changes to these standards and it's being set up such that to make those changes for the council is not going to be terribly burdened.
Yeah. And I mean, I agree with you, Councilor Exner, that this has the potential to create a lot of visual clutter and just not be aesthetically that great. But unfortunately, just to reiterate what Kelly said, legally, we're required to allow 5G utilities to come in and put their facilities in the cities right away, which is unfortunate that, you know, we're doing it at a point when we haven't developed the technology well enough to have, you know, smaller facilities, you know, we talk about these small cells that are going on top of the utility poles, but then they also have these cabinets that come along with them. And it's unfortunate, but you know, as David said, this is right now the most robust language that, you know, we can use to regulate what can, what can come into the city.
Councilor Smallwood?
Just real quick, Shelley, some of what little bit of literature I've read on this topic. It sounds like it's going to hit the major metropolitan areas first and then kind of do the trickle out, which is what we normally see. So your best guess, what's the timeline that we're looking at maybe before it hits us? No idea, huh?
No clue. I know it's rolling out now in like cities like New York and Los Angeles. Yeah, Councilor Pete's old probably has a better idea.
Thanks.
Yeah. So I was going to say exactly that. I think we should approve this, get this in place and then adjust as we go. And you're all laughing at my internet connection. So then we can come back, like you said, and what we've heard at OBAC, what we've heard everywhere else is it's going to hit the big cities. It's going to hit Portland, take Gresham. It's not going to hit for a while. If it is, it would be very small and very minimal. They're going to invest in the high density areas. That's just how it works there. And, you know, that's why invested so heavily in our fiber and everything else because, you know, it wasn't going to come probably in the next 10 years like that. And in the meantime, things will shrink, right? Just like your cell phone, right? And in size and got more powerful. But in that, we can also adjust some of the rules. And who knows what the FCC will be regulating in a year from now or in five years from now in that. So I think it would be wise to adopt these now and follow it closely. And I don't think it's too much of an exaggeration, David, that this is changing weekly. I've seen it change pretty quickly. You know, over the months and years of past, but so I think that's the correction the city should go in is approve it now and then adjust as it changes and gets closer to us. We're going to see it coming. Going to hit Portland first, right? It's going to hit Gresham, but at least we'll have done our due diligence of getting something in place. So it's not a blank slate where they come in and do whatever and then their grandfather did.
Okay. Is that, we come to conclusion of council questions for staff before public testimony? Okay. And so with that, we'll move to our public testimony part of this. Guidelines for those who wish to speak, please try to avoid repetition. If someone else has already expressed the same thoughts, it is sufficient to state that you agree with the statements of a previous speaker, even if that's all you say. If you have, if you have documents, maps or letters that you wish to have considered by the body, they must formally be placed in the record of this proceeding. To do that, either before or after you speak, email your materials to recorder@ci.sandy.or.us and staff will make sure your evidence is properly processed. As a reminder, testimony for this public hearing will be called for in three groups. Testimony in favor of the proposal, testimony opposed to the proposal and neutral testimony. If you're participating online, click the raise hand button at the appropriate time and wait to be recognized. If you're participating via telephone, dial star nine to raise your hand at the appropriate time and wait to be recognized. I'm now calling for testimony in favor of the proposal. Please remember to state your name and mailing address for the record and you'll have three minutes. Jeff?
Okay, may I just taking a look at the list of attendees? And I do not see any raised hands.
All right. I'm now calling for testimony against the proposal. Please do state your name and mailing address for the record. You also have three minutes.
And I do not see any raised hands.
Okay. I'm now calling for neutral testimony. These are general comments, neither for nor against the proposal. Please do remember to stick your name and mailing address for the record. You'll have three minutes.
And I do not see any raised hands.
All right. I'm looking for the staff recap and recommendation.
Um, no recap. Our recommendation is that you adopt the ordinance or vote yes on the ordinance. I don't know. I'm new here. I don't know.
No, no problem, Shelley. We're all new here and learning the virtual meeting anyways, right? I'm now calling for a motion to close the public hearing.
Move it to the public hearing.
Would one of you like to second the motion?
I'll second.
All right. So Counselor Schultz has moved to close the public hearing and Counselor Smallwood has seconded. All those in favor, please signify by I or give me a thumbs up. Opposed, give me a nay or a thumbs down. All right. Motion carries. And so to adopt, now to adopt the ordinance, I need to call on Jeff to read the ordinance by title.
Okay, this is ordinance 2020-22, an ordinance amending Title 12 of the Sandy municipal code by creating a new chapter 12.20, addressing small wireless facilities in the rights of way.
Hey, can I interrupt real fast? Counselor Lee is trying to get in and I think you need to invite her as a panelist.
Thank you. Interesting to see her as an attendee.
I just saw her on there.
I'm not seeing her either, Kelly.
You told me you had an email too, Jeff. I just got it.
Sorry.
She's probably pulling up the other link.
Yeah.
Sorry for interrupting, but I just wanted to let you know that.
Yeah, please keep an eye on that. Okay. Is there, before we go to a motion for the first reading, is there any council discussion? Or if there is no discussion, I'll entertain a motion to adopt the first reading.
I'll move that we approve the first reading of 2021. Wait, what the number is?
There's a motion by Counselor Exner and a second by Counselor Hamlin. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye or give me a thumbs up.
Aye.
Opposed, give me a thumbs down or an a. Yeah, I think, I keep staring at Jeremy. That's why I'm pausing. Yeah, I think he's having issues with his internet. Okay.
If he just had Sandy net, come on.
I know. Um, so with that, Jeff, will you please do a second reading by title?
Okay, this is ordinance 2020-22, an ordinance amending Title 12 of the Sandy municipal code by creating a new chapter 12.20, addressing small wireless facilities in the rights of way.
Is there a motion to approve the second reading?
Second.
Motion by Counselor Hamlin to approve the second reading, a second by Counselor Exner. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye or give me a thumbs up.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Nay or thumbs down? All right. Motion carries. Put that down. And now we are going to Resolution 2020-20. Staff, Shelley or Jordan?
So this one was for the design standards. Did anybody have any questions about what was in this?
No.
No.
So is there a motion to adopt the design standards or discussion?
Maybe if we could have a summary for the public.
Sure. Yeah. So this resolution is for the design standards, basically for staff. Once we get an application for one of these 5G facilities, these are the standards against which staff will review the application. So it has a list of definitions, some of the general requirements, things like, you know, no advertising or branding or any other signage, any other signage, you know, no lighting, things like that. How these facilities can be attached to poles? What happens if those poles are wooden versus not wooden? Some requirements for being in a historic district and then as well as application requirements for any deviation from these design standards.
Thank you.
Also kind of address some of the questions that came up in the previous conversation about the ideas of ground mounted equipment. And you see how, you know, the regulations of these things in the city's power, we sort of have to hedge, you know, as strongly encouraging things like ground mounted ancillary equipment to be undergrounded as opposed to, you know, above ground. But there is also language in the design standards about making sure that it complies with ADA, as Kelly mentioned, that it can obstruct the sidewalk. And just kind of one of those things I want to bring your attention to, but it is an interesting sort of conundrum. And I do appreciate the council sort of, you know, foresight that other cities are going to be dealing with this before us and we may learn something here. The LOC was trying to, you know, come up with a model that can apply to all, understanding that this is sort of, you know, the, one, the regulatory environment that we're operating in. But two, that things can change and cities can still tailor this to our own, you know, local needs. You know, as the experience goes on with other cities and as, you know, regulations may change in the future in terms of our powers to regulate, you know, the rollout of this equipment. Just in the last five years and looking at this technology and how to regulate them, there's been a lot of actual, you know, breakthroughs in the small cellular, you know, equipment in terms of the size, the initial push from some of the larger cities like in the Bay Area. They did a lot of work, these telecoms, to get the equipment to be, I know we, we kind of debated and talked about the word stealth, but that was the push to actually make this equipment in effect disappear because you don't want a lot of visual clutter. And the actual equipment itself, the technology has gotten to the point where they could do that and make this equipment fit in decorative poles and do some of the undergrounding that we, you know, desire. So, you know, there's a lot of probably innovation and changes that will happen in the future. But, you know, like I said, this is an LOC model that we're adopting that has been worked on by a lot of different groups. And I think it addresses a lot of, you know, concerns that not just this city and this council would have, but cities all around the state brought to the table in developing this.
Thank you. And questions or comments by council or I'll entertain a motion?
From a procedural standpoint, we're just making a motion to approve.
The resolution?
Yep. I'd make a motion to approve the resolution.
I'll second that.
There's a motion by Counselor Hamlin and a second by Counselor Pete Sold to adopt the resolution. All those in favor, please signify by giving me aye or a thumbs up.
Aye.
Opposed? They are thumbs down. Motion carries. Next resolution, 2020-21. Probably you, Shelley.
Um, so this one is for the fees that the utility franchisees are required to pay to the city. I'll just read just a couple of sentences from this resolution. The application fee for citing SWF, that stands for small wireless facility on an existing infrastructure, shall be $500 for up to five sites and $100 for each additional site. The application fee for citing an SWF on a new support structure proposed to be installed in the city's right of way shall be $1,000 per new replacement or modified support structure. And then in section two of this resolution, the annual usage fee for a small wireless facility shall be $270 per facility cited in the city's right of way. And all three of those also include the condition that if the cost of processing the application or administering, making the right of way available exceeds those fees, then the fee can be adjusted to the amount equal for the actual cost.
Thank you, Shelley. And council discussion or motion?
I move that we approve 2020-21.
Second that.
Motion by Counselor Exner and a second by Counselor Smallwood. All those in favor, signify by saying aye or give me a thumbs up.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay or thumbs down? Motion carries. All right. Thank you. Thank you, Shelley. Really appreciate all the information tonight and the work you've done on this.
Of course. You're welcome.
And moving on to noise variance requests by Northwest Natural. Staff, Jordan?
I think Thomas is an attendee, but I'll go ahead and give you the overview. We also have Andrea from Northwest Natural. If there's any technical questions about the requests, but yes, thank you, council, for asking the tough questions of Northwest Natural in terms of their project coming through town on their transmission line. So this is a variance for noise where they're going to be working overnight to complete their work. It's one of the challenges on the state highway. You know, and in terms of impact of traffic and things like that, we need to do, you know, work at night to reduce that impact. But this would be between the hours of, I think it's 7:00 PM and 5:30 AM between, I think, the middle of this month through almost Labor Day, September 4th. And we know that our code requires we bring this to the city council for these variance requests on, on the noise ordinance. You know, it's kind of a science, kind of a, an art in terms of determining, you know, sort of the value, the noise value, DBAs that are caused by the noise. This particular area, there is some residential in the, you know, the general area of university and Highway 26. And, you know, the work that's going to be done will involve, you know, using heavy equipment to do some digging and grinding and asphalt, you know, work, maybe probably a tractor truck doing some of the clean out work, which all sort of exceed the, you know, the sound levels. They're fairly typical for, you know, a highway. So definitely some noise, but nothing, you know, extreme, but you know, definitely something the council should approve before they start their work in the middle of the night. So I'm sure Andrea can answer more questions and knows more details than I do about type of work that they do and putting the gas line, but I think they're asking for your permission for this noise variance.
Any questions from council?
Yeah, thank you for doing this. I know I brought it up at the last meeting because we've done this before with other utilities like PGE or even the state when they've done their own maintenance work on the highway. I see that your work location though on the 26 is very small location, less than a tenth of a mile. But I know you're going all the way from their city limits of Orient all the way up to university. I understand it's a state highway, but it's still our city in that aspect of it. I'm not saying we deny it by any means at all. I mean, we want to get this work done at night, avoid any traffic, but should it not be applied and asked for for that as, as other utilities and even ODOT and other areas have had to do that through our city as well when doing work at night? So just question I have is why doesn't it not pose from Orient all the way up to university and then through university over?
Hi, this is Andrea Canal, Northwest Natural. Do I need to state my address? You have it. Okay, good. So thank you for the question. The, the requirement for the noise variance, the location of it was dictated actually by our Public Works permit that was issued by the City of Sandy Public Works. They define the location of where the noise variance was required, really based on the proximity to residential structures. The remainder of the route really goes through areas that are either rural or commercial. So that's my understanding of how that was defined. And maybe Thomas can, they can, he can shed some more light on that. But that's the zone that was specifically called out from the permit and based on previous discussions with public works. That is what we were told we would need to do, really just because of the proximity to residential.
Yeah, that's, that was my understanding. Can you guys hear me?
Yeah.
Yes.
Jeff, I think you, you did something on my computer. Now it looks different.
I promoted you to a panelist role, Thomas, just for this discussion.
Okay, thank you. Yeah. Yeah, Mike was the one that did the right of way permit for this project, for the variance. And now that was my understanding to the, this specific, specific spot because of residential just east of university is why we needed the noise variance here, but the rest of town is all commercial and everything will be shut down. All the businesses will be shut down at night. So wouldn't be bothering them.
I, I agree. I want this done at night. Don't get me wrong, but remember we did change our, our code to allow residential in our commercials, not that it's there right now, but it's high up right there across Safeway. And so the people right below it and right across from it with no trees or anything going in, will hear that noise with it. So that's my concern. And it's not just there east of university. We got residents directly across from the university. with it. So that's my concern. And it's not just there east of university. We got residents directly across from university and a little bit there. But that's my concern is that, that noise. So letting them know that this will be going on. I think there was a notice of 200 foot or maybe 200 feet from.
Oh yeah, we, we sent out a notice the 29th. I, I did about 300 feet. Just, we put 200 in the staff report, but I wanted to get as many people along the highways we could, those, those homes there. So they would all know what was going on.
Right. Yeah. So I'm concerned, you know, right there across from Safeway and the noise that goes across the airwaves right there. But like I said, I want it done at night. I'm not saying it's not. I just maybe noticing them or whatever, or for future noise ordinance or other things coming up. Remember, we did change our code to allow residential in those commercials. And so those will be added in when they do come. So.
Yes.
More internal things that we want to remember.
Andrea?
I, I just wanted to add that Northwest Natural sent letters to residents in the, along the route to provide information about the upcoming prod, project. Probably about a month ago, and that probably included a lot of the residents in that area that included some information about the project and some contact information if they had questions or, or comments. Also upon advice of, of Public Works, this noise variance request is strictly for installing an HDD horizontal directional drill through that section. So that's what this three week period covers. There will also be future trenching that will get us over to university and then also the final paving operations, which will be done at the end of the project. And so we will submit subsequent noise variance requests for those items. And if you would like to have, especially the paving will kind of be done all at, you know, probably in one mobilization. So we can provide, you know, some notification for that larger area if that's helpful.
Thank you. And Council Lee?
Sorry. Yes, I was just going to ask if anyone had concerns about that when you sent the letter out a month ago? If neither the city or you have heard from anyone about the noise, then it may not be that significant.
We have not received any calls from the public about the, the letter that we have. Our crews, our contractor has been working up outside of city limits for the last few weeks. Again, it's more rural and there was one neighbor who had some concerns about lights, but no issues about noise have been reported to us at this time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Jeff?
Just to add that it was an article in the newsletter that went out last week to the whole city that did include a link to that letter as well.
Thank you. Alright. Is there any more discussion questions or is there a motion to direct staff to issue the noise variance permit? And Council Schultz?
I noticed in the agenda that we were supposed to have a public comment period for this. Is that not true? It was listed under the public comment periods that we would have tonight.
And now that's Eagle Park Improvement Extension. I just see 5G small cell code and Eagle Park Improvement Extension.
Mine has this one on there too. I wonder if it's in.
Council Schultz, it was originally listed that way. Then I was, then I was informed that this didn't need to be a formal public hearing. That's, that's why that happened.
Okay, no worries. I just wanted to make sure we weren't missing anything.
Yeah, thank you. Andrea?
I just wanted to ask one more question and clear, or clarification about the noise variance. Our contractor is working Sunday night through Saturday mornings. And reading through your noise variance, it says no work on Sundays. So would this noise variance allow them to work Sunday night and into Saturday morning to match the ODOT permitted, permitted hours? And maybe that's a question for Public Works to pick up later. Thank you.
Thank you. It sounds like, Thomas, unless you're able to answer that question tonight, I guess we'll leave it for you guys after.
I, I'll, I'll talk to Mike about that, but I, I think we, we would allow that. But I'll confirm with Mike and we'll be in touch, Andrea, about that.
Okay, thank you. Alright, council, looking for a motion to give staff some direction here?
Would still move.
Have a motion to have a second.
Second.
The motion by Council Lee and a second by Councilor Schultz to direct staff to issue the noise variance permit to Northwest Natural for the duration of work from August 16th to September 4th between the hours of 6:00 PM and 7:00 AM, including any conditions deemed necessary by the city council. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye or give me a thumbs up. Opposed, please give me a nay or a thumbs down. Motion carries. Thank you for your time tonight, Andrea, and thank you, Thomas. Appreciate it.
You're welcome. Thank you, Andrea.
And moving,
Thank you.
Moving forward to new business, go to, for land use application extension request. I will now provide some instructions for our public testimony for this. Public testimony for this hearing will be called four in three groups. Testimony in favor of the proposal, testimony opposed of the proposal, and neutral testimony. If you're participating online, click the raise hand button at the appropriate time and wait to be recognized. If you're participating via telephone, dial star nine to raise your hand at the appropriate time and wait to be recognized. Speaker time limits. That will be 15 minutes for applicant's presentation, three minutes for each audience member testifying in favor, against, or neutral, and five minutes for the applicant's rebuttal. I will now open the public hearing for state land use file number 2020 dash 029 EXT at 8:03 PM. And I'm now calling for extensions from the hearing body. Any conflicts of interest from the hearing body? And now I'm pulling the body for any ex parte contact. Now I'm calling for any challenges to members of the hearing body. To bring a challenge, if you're participating online, click the raise hand button and wait to be recognized. If you're participating via telephone, dial star nine to raise your hand and wait to be recognized. I will now read the following statements. If you testify, you must raise all issues you wish to address at this hearing. If your issue is not raised at this hearing, you may not be able to raise it later in any appeal. Your comments should state why the application should or should not be approved or include your proposed modifications you believe are necessary for approval according to the standards. If you do not raise specific issues at the final evidentiary hearing or by the close of the record, or fail to provide statements or evidence to allow the local government or its designee to respond to the issue, you will not be able to appeal the decision to the Land Use Board of Appeals based on that particular issue. Failure of the applicant to raise constitution or other issues relating to the proposed conditions of approval with sufficient specificity to allow the local government or its designee to respond to the issue precludes an action for damages in Circuit Court. I'm now calling for the staff report. Emily?
Alright, thank you. I'm going to share my screen and pull up a brief slideshow. Alright, so tonight we're, we're hearing an extension request for Eagle Park Improvements. So this is the site that's on the corner of Highway 26 and 362nd north of Industrial Way. So it's a pretty visible site. Back in 2015, council approved a zone change request from I-2 Light Industrial to I-1 Industrial Park. And that was contingent on the applicant completing some sandy style upgrades by June 1st, 2018. Then on May 25th, 2018, the Development Service Director granted the applicant an extension till July 29th, 2019. So then in March of 2019, there's a lot of dates here, they applied for a design review modification, which was approved. And part of that approval included a condition that they would apply for another extension before July 29th, 2019. So before that first extension expired, which they did, and that was granted on July 9th and was good until July 29th, 2020. After those two extensions, the applicant was advised by the director to ask city council to grant an extension for an additional year to July 29th, 2021, or to another date that council approves tonight. Just a brief review of this. By the approved building modifications would incorporate sandy style design elements into the facades of the highly visible buildings, which again are visible from Highway 26, 362nd and Industrial Way. The building modifications would also allow for higher and more diverse uses as the property would eventually change zones from I-2 to I-1. So our recommendation as staff is that we support granting an extension. We recommend that you listen to the applicant and any public comment and then make a decision on whether or not you want to grant the extension. If you do decide to grant the extension, it would need to be till July 29th, 21 or another specific date that you specify. And that's all.
Alright, well, thank you, Emily. Appreciate that. We will now go for the applicant's presentation. You have 15 minutes. Mr. Maiden, I see you there. You'll want to unmute yourself. So you got 15 minutes. Hello, sir.
Good to be with you tonight. We have went through quite a few stops and starts to get on with this project. It was just in March of this year that we finally got the building permits for the, for the entire construction. And then we have the COVID. It seems like it's been something like that all along. We, we are self-funding the entire construction project and although we were hopeful, there has been no matching funds of any kind. It's just essentially whatever we can do. And we, we are committed to make these changes, to follow our plan. And we are asking the councils to give us more time to do it. It's not going to happen quickly, but it will be steady. And that's why we're here tonight.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. We'll now go for public testimony. Guidelines for those who wish to speak, please try to avoid repetition. If someone else has already expressed the same thoughts, it is sufficient to state that you agree with the statement of a previous speaker, even if that's all you say. If you have documents, maps, or letters that you wish to have considered by the body, they must formally be placed in the record of this proceeding. To do that, either before or after you speak, email your materials to recorder@ci.sandy.or.us and staff will make sure your evidence is properly, properly processed. As a reminder, testimony for this public hearing will be called four in three groups. Testimony in favor of the proposal, testimony opposed to the proposal, and neutral testimony. If you're participating online, click the raise hand button at the appropriate time and wait to be recognized. If you're participating via telephone, dial star nine to raise your hand at the appropriate time and wait to be recognized. I'm now calling for testimony in favor of the proposal. A reminder to state your name and mailing address for the record. You'll have three minutes. Jeff?
Hey there, just taking a look. And I do not see any raised hands.
Thank you. I'm now calling for testimony against the proposal. A reminder to state your name and mailing address for the record. You'll have three minutes.
And I do not see any raised hands.
Okay, I'm now calling for neutral testimony. General comments, neither for nor against the proposal. Just a reminder to state your name and mailing address for the record. You'll have three minutes.
And I do not see any raised hands.
Alright, thank you. Emily, ready for the staff recap and recommendation?
I don't have much to recap, but I think I would recommend that you get some clarification from the applicant as to how long they're requesting. I think the letter said five years they wanted. Our staff are recommending something more along one year. That's typically what our extensions are. But it's up to you guys.
Yeah, but as the director too, that's been granting all the extensions, one thing I would like to say is that Mike's been easy to work with. And I fully acknowledge and believe him that he's going to move forward with it. I've been working with him now on this project for a number of years. I think three or four years, I believe. And the first design that was approved by council back in 2015, before I was working on this project, was nice, but it was rather too robust and probably too expensive to move forward. Even if Mike was not financing this all himself, I think it would have been just too costly of a modification to those existing web still buildings. I think the modification which we then approved as staff a couple of years ago is more suitable and more easy to finance would be my guess. I do agree with Emily that one years are typical extension timeline. However, because of the uncertainty right now with COVID, I would ask that you probably grant at least two years. And if you do do that, I would also like some direction on if you would like me to have the ability to grant further extensions beyond that, because what I would hate to see happen is Mike continue to plug away on these buildings. They're, they're large buildings. There's five of them. And say in two years, he gets three buildings done and we see that he's making progress. I don't really want to, I would like to not bring this back before you and two years ago, in two years to get another extension. I would like to have the ability as the director to grant some extensions if we see that he's making progress on the site development. So I, I would like some direction as far as how long the timeline is going to be for if you decide to grant an extension and then also how much ability as the director I have to grant some additional time in addition to that. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Mr. Maiden, you'll have five minutes of rebuttal testimony.
Really don't have any rebuttal at all. We're going to keep plugging away. We've already started on the foundry building, the oldest building we have. We have recited the entire north side and are starting to construct the facades there. We've got a new door installed on the east view, the east front of that building. Probably within the next couple of months, all the steel siding will be removed. So we are making progress there and that's the, probably the biggest headache I have. The larger buildings, I, I'm hopeful will scoot along a little quicker because they're occupied. We want to get in there and get out of the way right away. Whereas the building that I built in 1979 is getting a total rebuild. And it's, it's going to involve a lot of money. It's basically rebuilding it from scratch. So we really want to do this. We want the gateway to Sandy to, to look attractive and that's really what I can pledge today is that we're very committed to follow through with this.
Great. Thank you very much. And my guess is you wanted the time. He, he said five, five years, but you're hoping for a couple of years, a couple of years, more than one year?
We really are. You know, it's, we can probably spend between 10 and 25,000 a month, maybe. Probably more, maybe 10 right now under the, our, our tenants are all stressed right now. And it's, we're hopeful that they can get back to paying rent and, and flourishing. But it's, if we can at the first of the, of next year, you know, that pace will pick up. We are fully occupied. It's just a matter of these unusual circumstances we're in right now. But nonetheless, we will be chipping away. And I invite any one of you to drop in from time to time and, and note the progress.
Awesome. Well, thank you so much. Is there any questions or discussion for council involving Mr. Maiden before we close tonight's meeting? And Councilor Exner?
Yeah, I guess I'm not as familiar with the buildings as I probably should be, but Mike, are you, are you working on the edge of the highway in, I forget which one of the buildings you said you're working on right away, but it seems to me that there are some buildings that are right on the edge of the highway and then some that are back behind where it not quite as. edge of the highway and then some that are back behind, where it's not quite as visual. Is that your process of working from the outside in?
When we first got started, city council told me to start first on my original building that I built in 1979. And that is right directly behind that billboard. You're all familiar with that billboard. So we're working on the on the north front of that building right now and are just rounding the western corner of it. If that helps describe where we're working now.
And I guess I like the idea of having more than one year extension. I'm thinking maybe two and two, something like that, for at least four.
Kelly's been great, by the way. This original plan was approved back in the day. I got a phone call from Kelly. He told me, hey, come up, let's talk about your plan here. And he was really instrumental in guiding myself and our architect, Bob Reed, into something that we can really actually accomplish, because these web buildings are kind of limited on which you can hang on the outside of them. Nobody saw that coming when we, the previous architect drew up these grandiose Sandy-style plans and so anyhow, thanks a lot, Kelly.
Very good. All right. Well, thank you so much. Counselor Pete Sol.
Yeah, I appreciate all your work you're doing, Mike, there. You know, that is kind of the entrance into our community and, you know, working on different zoning policies we've done in the past and what we've been able to do prior to that, a few years prior to that and changing some of the zoning to allow more commercial-like activities in that area and your desire to change that zoning so that you can take advantage of that, as well as just being a key place in our community. We are in rough times right now and, you know, and I appreciate you plugging away at it and keeping going at that. I normally probably wouldn't suggest more than a year, but I'd suggest all five years in that my, you know, didn't think I'd do that before, but understanding some of the comments, who knows where council in the future will be sitting at or whatever it may be. But, you know, it's only, it's only to Mike's the best thing for Mike would be to finish it and go on, you know, the money putting in involved in it. So I truly do believe he will. It has proven that in the past as well, too. So I would recommend, you know, a follow-up five years of extension on that.
Thank you. Unless there's further questions or comments for Mike, we do need to close the public hearing and then go into discussion and voting. Do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
I make a motion to close the public hearing.
Is there a second? Motion by Counselor Pete Sol and a second by Counselor Exner to close the public hearing. All those in favor signify by saying aye or give me a thumbs up. Opposed, give me a nay or a thumbs down. Public hearing is closed. Mike, thank you for joining us this evening and for all your contributions to our community, and thank you. Very much appreciate your time. All right, council discussion, comments, or motions? Yeah, Counselor.
I would just like to say if we have an extended period of time, then there should be some kind of reports or updates that Kelly would be in charge of to make sure things keep moving along and we're not back here in five years.
Yeah, I agree. And I agree with Counselor Exner and Pete Sol's comments about giving additional time. And with obviously Counselor Lee said with wanting to get updates from staff and it sounds like staff's pretty comfortable with their level of communication and stuff and it feels like everyone's feeling pretty good about this. Counselor Exner?
Yeah, I'm modifying my extension. Mike's been such a good person to work with and you know, I'm looking for ways to make sure that we move forward on some of these things. I'd be more than happy that with the updates go to five years.
All right. Well, if there's no further comment, I'm looking for a motion that involves an extension. What would five years be? I guess it would be 2020. This is going to be embarrassing. 2020, right? So it'll be 2025.
I make a motion that we extend the make the extension for five years at July, whatever, 29 of 2025 with annual updates from Kelly.
Yes. Is there a second? Yes. All right. We have a motion from Counselor Pete Sol and a second from Counselor Smallwood. All those in favor signify by saying aye or give me a thumbs up. Opposed, give me a nay or a thumbs down. Motion carry. All right. Thank you.
Did Mike, was Mike on there? Did he even know that we approved it?
Oh, he's on. He's an attendee. He's an attendee. He's just not on your panel screen.
Just so you know, just like a final order, what we've been doing with extensions granted by Council or Planning Commission is Stan will have a letter that he virtually signs that we send to Mike.
Okay, great. All right, report from the same manager, Jordan.
All right, good evening. Items here, the Arts Commission listening sessions are scheduled. We posted that on our Facebook page and beginning the word out. We've been receiving feedback virtually. So the first one is actually this week. It is Thursday at 6:00 PM. Those forums are going to be, again, electronic. We're all pretty used to this format these days. And then there will be a second follow-up based around sort of the feedback that they receive and the artist receives at the session this week. That will be August 12th at 6:00 PM. So staff has been working with Becky, the artist, you know, and staff has been working with the Arts Commission too on these events. I know, I believe the mayor had a conversation. And so there's been, you know, some work about what these, you know, sessions are going to be about and hopefully, you know, what's to be gained from engaging with the public and helping, you know, the the vision for the mural and making any changes that the public would like to see with that proposal. And then ultimately, you know, coming back to the council or the Urban Renewal Board for their blessing. So hopefully a good turnout. I think that's been some of the, you know, the difficulty with the prior meetings and the conversations with the public about this is we'd love to see people come and give their input on the mural to the artist and to the Arts Commission. You know, meaningful input, ways that it can be improved and changed and and also a chance for the artist to talk to the public too about what her vision is for the growing together. So, like I said, that's on Thursday at 6:00 PM. City Council elections update. The last data file is August 17th. We've had a number of folks that have started to pull papers or interested. So just a reminder about that date. And yeah, that's coming up pretty quick. So speaking of the 17th, I put out, I think, one of the weekend updates about the possibility of taking a break here in the summer. And I threw out August 17th, which would be your second meeting of this month as a break date. And I kind of wanted to see if the council was, you know, what your temperature was on that. Last year, I think we took a couple weeks off in July and August. So we've sort of programmed to assume that maybe we wouldn't have that meeting, but we can always think of things to fill your time if we need to. But if that's okay, we'll plan to meet again after Labor Day.
I think we're good.
Cool. And so that meeting actually, every September, our first meeting in September is going to be on a Tuesday. So that will be Tuesday, the 8th, I think. And then something I wanted to actually kind of get your opinion on and maybe, you know, just put on your radar, something that we've been working on based off conversations we've had about the coronavirus and things that we can do. The Community Services Department's been working on different ideas for events. I think we had public comment about movies in the park a couple meetings ago. And so the staff has been, you know, working on some ideas, Carol and Sarah and Tanya, about how we can do that. You know, our difficulty is, you know, obviously the cap on the amount of people, but we do have a, we do have a plan to be able to register people, make sure they're socially distanced in the park, and we can put on the movies and that can happen in August. The only thing that we're concerned about is, you know, some of the PR around it, putting a cap, you know, is kind of an unfortunate situation with not, you know, allowing more people than what we would like, obviously, but maybe there's a chance we'll be in phase two and there can be more capacity and we can open up more, you know, areas and, you know, tickets for the movies. But we would offer it sort of on back-to-back nights for a couple of weekends. We looked at the drive-in movie. And I think even Sandy Helping Hands was looking at an idea for that in area too, but some of the technology challenges and the sound systems aren't really working out. They were kind of banging their head against it. We're saying, well, let's just try this movies in the park idea. But I wanted to kind of get your gauge on it just because of some of those complications that we were kind of wrestling with, like we want this to be a good thing, you know, we want to offer something that the community can take part in, you know, it'd be, people can register and, you know, we'll make sure we actually even vetted the plan of the county to say, hey, they don't approve anything, but we want to make sure we're not going to get another letter or anything. And so they were, said, yeah, that sounds like you have a plan. But just in the, you know, the event that we put this thing on and people are going to be like, why are you doing this? You know, you have that camp. And then you have the camp of, you know, folks maybe showing up, not knowing they needed to register, you know, only 25 people maximum, that sort of thing. But it's one of those good, no good deeds go unpunished sort of thing that we're kind of bracing ourselves for. But also just, you know, is this something that you guys think would be good? And if so, we're ready to go with it. We also have some other ideas in terms of like maybe doing a city vehicle parade through town like we've been doing at the birthday parties to try to get everybody involved and, you know, have people come out on their porches and, you know, do a toast or something. But yeah, welcome any of your thoughts, feedback on that. Worth a shot.
Counselor Exner?
I'm kind of surprised that the county didn't come up with some ideas for you. I'm aware of, and without vetting anybody's I don't know, secrets out or anything like that. I'm aware that there are some churches who have been in negotiations with the county. The county has given them some ideas and approval to meet with relatively large groups of people. Spatial distancing, masks, and how people interact with each other and all that sort of stuff, but well over 25. I'd be excited to see some of that kind of thing put together and worked on. I think you could figure out a way to make more than the 25 groups. If you spread them out right, groups of 25, spread out by big distances between those groups, whatever. But I think the county has shown that they'd be willing to provide some information in that way. So I would ask the county may push a little bit to get that part working. I think that'd be a really good idea. I'm looking for, and I know a lot of people are looking for something that the community can do to show that we've got, doing more than just sheltering in quiet little caves. Give us something to do. Something to be feeling like this is a community again.
I agree there is to bring our community together, you know, obviously in a responsible manner. And yeah, as long as we have all the precautions and we're working with the county and doing everything we're supposed to be doing, I want to push forward to do as much as we can as a community. So I like it.
Cool.
Okay. Anyone else? Counselor Lee?
Yes, I also like the idea of maybe having our two trolleys flying around on some set schedule around town, maybe ringing the bell and letting people know in advance that there's coming around.
Awesome. Can we throw candy out the windows?
Yeah, why not?
Lori, come on. That guy, that guy caught Kai Bosch during the Sandy Mountain Festival parade is when the fire department would do that. Then there was concern that people would get killed.
You got to drop back, though.
I know. Hey, I'm very rarely a joy kill.
The real problem is with kids, they never socially distanced when it comes to candy. Yeah, I think we're good, Jordan. Thank you for working with staff to come up with that idea.
Thank you. All right, that's it for me. Thank you.
Oh, okay, great. Thank you. All right, counselor and committee reports. Counselor Schultz?
No report tonight.
No, no, now I got to think quickly who goes next. Thanks for that. Counselor Exner?
I don't think it makes any difference anymore. Who goes next?
It does to me. It does to me.
You want to do, you call me up, I'll do some talking. Couple things. One of the things that we talked about as we looked at the Black Lives Matter listening time, we talked about doing some, some book reading and some conversations about that, and I don't know how that conversation has, but I'm in a couple of book clubs that meets throughout the week and we're actually starting to read some of those kinds of books. And I was looking up for that particular item for my own personal group of folks, and there's some really good books out there, and I don't know if Ms. Polk or Ms. George has some thoughts about doing some of that, but I can certainly see several books out there that really are thought-provoking and maybe we could find a way to meet in some format and get some ideas moving forward about how some of that idea might be put into making some change, doing something on the, on the ground, something rather than just talking about it. I'm not a guy that likes to just sit and talk. I like to do stuff. So I would really suggest that if you are interested, I could throw out a half dozen books, maybe something that we can work our way towards. I don't know if there's other ideas too, but appreciate what staff's doing. I'd love to see council move on some of these things too.
Yeah, absolutely. And Jeff, just want to say I appreciate the suggestion that Jeff sent out earlier. Earlier, I think it was today or yesterday. Okay, very, very much appreciated.
Oh, yeah, Carl, you reminded me of something that I came across. Some other library systems are putting some of those books like always available, like on Kindles or whatever, like e-readers, because ours are like all those type of books right now you can't get for years, but I saw that some library systems are able to just have them, like anybody can just download them anytime. So I don't know, Jordan, if that's something you could talk to Sarah about. I have no idea how these other systems are doing that, if it's something we can do. But maybe look into it, get some of these lists from Carl or Tracy and see if that's something we can do.
Yeah, we'll look into it. Maybe we just need to buy more licenses or something like that.
Appreciate that. Another thing is I want to make sure that reinforced what Jordan said about the art listening times coming up this week. Appreciate all the work that's been happening there. I know there's been some trepidation about what it might mean and all. But I think it's always good to be able to get input. Seems like we're always struggling to get that kind of input figuring out how to listen to our citizens. And finally, this is sort of a, maybe a critique of some of the things I saw this evening. It's a good example of at the bottom of each of our staff reports, there's a recommendation from the staff that's doing the delivering of the message. It looks like it's kind of inconsistent. In some cases, I see somebody says approve, and I've seen somebody else say direct or somebody else has said, we're supposed to approve the first and second reading and that doesn't come up. And so sometimes it's a little difficult to figure out as a council, what my motion is supposed to be and and rather than putting it all on kind of a fumble, I'd like to see us a little more professional. Where maybe we can have a review and each of the staff can make sure that they have what it is we're trying to do at the end. Where council is either voting for a reading or voting for approval of an ordinance or what it might be the subject. And it looks like it's a little bit inconsistent. So that's a suggestion, and that's all I have.
Can you just write what we need to say and then we'll just say it? That's the right.
That's what I was trying to say.
Well, that's what I've said in the past, and it's always worked that well. I like to cheat.
I think it definitely, all right, Counselor Lee?
Yes, I was just going to say that the women's group at the library have already gone through some of that list and had discussions and it's through some of that list and had discussions and it's available from the library. Also, the state library does have those downloads where you can create your own CD, so I'm not sure that we couldn't get them from the state library system. The other thing I was going to say is, last meeting I talked about the portable shower for homeless folks and subsequent to that, Mike Walker talked to me about maybe the Action Center having a place for it. And I know that probably Stan or his wife was on that board and they seemed kind of supportive of that, so we're looking at trying to find.
Yeah, I'm on the board. We had a discussion on it. We're all very excited. We're, we're all good with it, so we're, we're looking forward to talking to the organization and moving ahead.
Great.
Thank you for bringing that forward.
Yeah. The other thing, I was involved in this last week was a meeting with the childcare folks. We had Happy Valley, Oregon City, Plaquemines County and some other folks on the call, but what we're doing is looking at what each of the cities are doing to enhance childcare facilities. So I reported on our parking, on our new remodeling program and making childcare priority. And Oregon City talked about cutting SDCs for childcare facilities. And Happy Valley is changing their ordinance to allow more children at various facilities. And Plaquemines Community College is actually setting up a program of its own in the area. So we're continuing to work together on that and developing a database of tools that all the various cities can share. And with that, that's it.
Awesome. Thank you. And Counselor Hamlin?
All right, two things for tonight. First thing, Oregon Trail School District Board had a board meeting, special session last week. They did review a number of policies and actually took testimony as well too. It's their first time taking testimony since going remote. I won't go into details of the meeting, just as I, I'd like you all to kind of take your own look into the matter as well too. There's plenty online about this as well too. But definitely check that out. Looks like they're starting to build a little bit of a relationship with the stand-up Sandy movement and the safe group, so. Still a lot of work to do, but definitely making some bit of progress. The second piece, just a, a big thank you. As you all know, we've concluded the process for Jordan's evaluation. I wanted to thank all of the directors and counselors and the mayor for your participation in that process. Having a full-time job and then doing that on the side's a lot of work, but I want to thank everybody for me not having to nag them too badly. And just want to send a special thank you to both Tyler and David for their support along the way as well too. Really appreciate. And David, I'll be sending you a bill for my time here before long as well too, so. You get a T-shirt discount, though.
Anything. You got hats, you got like a, you know, like little, little, you know, drink warmers. I'll take it.
All right. That's all I got.
Thank you, John, for your time.
Thank you, absolutely. And Counselor Smallwood?
I got nothing tonight.
All right, thank you, Counselor. Counselor Pete told.
Yeah, this, we're gonna have our econ meeting this Wednesday and it's gonna be a kind of a trial by error. Not everyone in, in that group is used to doing these type of meetings and maybe a little tougher for some that, but we're gonna see how it goes. We'll be talking about some urban renewal stuff as we talked about the last meeting, kind of, kind of getting a little taste of what it's like to meet with that group on a, you know, a video conferencing scenario, so. But that's all I have.
Great, thank you. A real brief report for me, one is, is that the Arts Commission is going to be having a ceremony on Saturday at 10:00 AM. I know, Carl, I was waiting for you. I got you on this one. To celebrate the, the mural, the, the Cook mural cer- ceremony. I believe a member of, of his family is going to be there as well. That committee has put together countless hours of volunteerism and work in the restoration of those murals, and so they're gonna, we're gonna recognition for them at 10:00 AM on Saturday if anybody would like to go. And then I would also go ahead.
That they're concerned about the, the groups of people. And so just a reminder, if anybody's listening and planning on going, try to keep the social distancing in mind as you go along. There is some concerns that it might be get too big. I guess there's been some big groups involved, invited to go, so.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you. And then final thing is just thanking Counselor Hamlin for your work with the city manager review. Really appreciate the time that you put and professionalism that you put into that and, and your leadership and helping lead us through that process. And that is, that's my report for this evening. So with that, we will conclude our city. I know, well, you know, we, we do have more due tonight, John. So with that, I will close our city council meeting and for member counselors, we have an additional executive session that you'll need to click the link for. With that, I will close tonight's meeting. I had read, adjourned Sandy City Council meeting. We'll go to a staff report on our city manager compensation analysis. Tyler?
All right. Good evening, council. I missed the first handful of hours of this meeting. I'll join you now. Earlier this month, city council adopted a new compensation package for the general service employees. And throughout that process, it was identified the need to remove the city manager's position from the typical salary structure that we had in place. In doing so, we also found it was necessary to do a compensation study and market survey for the city manager position. We compared ourselves, City of Sandy, to five other cities in our area and found that the city manager's position was 14.74% underpaid in annual salary and 13.16% underpaid in total compensation. To, you know, follow along with council's desire to pay employees a fair and equitable wage, that's comparative to similar cities in our market, we'd recommend that we would increase the city manager's salary by 14.74%, bringing the total salary to $140,802, a vehicle allowance of $5,400, phone allowance of $720, for a total annual cost of compensation being $146,922. Done a review of the administration department's budget and there are cost savings available to help offset these additional costs. And with that, I'll turn it back to council.
All right. Thank you, Tyler. First, I just want to start off and say thank you to Tyler and Counselor John Hamlin for all the work that you've done in our city manager evaluation process as well as the comparable salaries analysis. I'm proud of the action I think we're gonna take tonight. I think it's a big move for our community to get our, our chief executive officer paid a compensation level that is comparable to other communities. I speak often about the challenges facing us and the multitude of things that I believe our city manager has to oversee that most city managers in other communities don't. Sandy Net, our own wastewater facility that gets a lot of news, we have our own Sandy Police Department that we don't contract out with the county like a lot of other communities. We're fastly growing. That puts a lot of stress on our traffic, transportation and, and planning departments. We have our own transit department here in the city of Sandy. And so it's a very big job for our chief executive officer. We're very proud to have George Wheeler in that position here. It is our hope that by offering a salary at a more competitive level that we'll be able to have Jordan for many years to come here at the city of Sandy. And in Jordan, it's our hope that, that you do like this contract that we're gonna vote for here tonight because we sure enjoy working with you and, and all the work you've done for our community. Not all of our staff, a lot of our staff live here, none of our, of our staff does. All of us do on city council, and so our community is very important to us and we trust you with it. And I know the individuals on council, that's not something that we take lightly. So thank you for all the work you do for our community and I just wanted to say that before we go into the vote tonight. With that, is there any motions or, I, I'm always open for discussion, but also looking for a motion and a second?
I'll make a motion that we approve the increase to Jordan Wheeler's salary as given in the staff report and have that be effective July 1, retroactive July 1, 2020.
I'll second that.
There's been a motion by Counselor John Hamlin and a second by Council President Jeremy Pete told. All those in favor, signify by say and I or give me a thumbs up.
Hi.
Hi.
Oppose, the nay or thumbs down? Motion carries. Congratulations, Jordan, and congratulations to our city.
Thank you for your support.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you.
And thank you, Jordan, for going through this process, Tyler. Something that's been on our goals for many years and it's something that finally the city needed to do the right thing and do, and we did it. Thank you, John, for going through the process as well and David helping us through it.
Thank you again for the opportunity. Thank you for the, the review. Like I said, in, in the review, I really enjoy working for the city of Sandy and really lucky to have a council that is so engaged and informed and passionate about what you do and it's been a pleasure and I'm looking forward to continue to work with you for many years to come, so thank you.
Yeah, David, you had a hand up. Yeah.
Yeah, just very briefly, mayor and council. So assuming Jordan is, is on board with, with your offer, the only thing we'd also need to do or certainly should do is just make a, an amendment to his, his agreement. Is everybody just a head nod if you can find comfortable with having the, the city attorney or, you know, work with John draft that up, doesn't really matter, but ultimately having the mayor go ahead and sign that rather than bringing it back to the full council. It's up to you, but that'd be my recommendation.
Yes.
Good.
Great. Thank you. Counselor Smallwood, I saw a hand up.
Well, I just, when we're done, I just don't want to forget something.
Oh, oh, that's right. Okay. Counselor Hamlin?
Well, I just wanted to say thank you, everybody, for allowing me and trusting me to manage both of these processes. Huge thank you to Tyler and David for their support as well too. And then just Jordan, awesome job on an interactive process. I just really have appreciated these last few weeks of being able to work closer with you and, and get to know your perspective a bit more through this process as well too. So thank you, everybody, for the support. I really appreciate it and the opportunity.
Thanks for your work, John.
Yes, yes. All right, Counselor Smallwood, what do you want?
Well, it's, it's, not to make it seem like it's a big deal. So I don't, I don't know how many of you guys are, have been following on social media the Sandy Stand Up Group at all. But some of their members, as, as groups tend to do, they have, they have members who are from a variety of sides on this race and then police issue. And some members of their group have taken upon themselves, they have a, a march, I believe they have planned for this coming Sunday, the 9th. They have extended invitations to members of protesters from Portland. So I don't really know what we have the potential of looking at for Sunday. It could get ugly. It could be fine, but I wanted to give you guys a heads up because I'm assuming by the look on some of your faces that you are not aware of that. They have also as a group, very much started to come against Sandy Police in a very negative manner. So if you're not following their page, you might, should start so that you can see some of the interactions that are going on and some of the comments being made. I feel that our police has worked with them very well and has been very proactive, both the chief and Lieutenant Sean Lundry. And they are taking some criticism from that group for being unethical. There's a, there's a section of the group that wants to defund them. And it's, it's getting kind of ugly, in my opinion, so a heads up to you guys.
And I think the other point on that is that I heard from a couple people that there were two representatives of the Proud Boys or whatever that group is, and if they all come to Sandy at once, things are gonna be very difficult.
Exactly. And so kind of what I've noticed on, on watching social media and then kind of paying attention as I drive around, you know, town, whether it's work or personally, is kind of what's happening is, is we have a group that's standing out in front of Bymart McDonald's in that area that are waving flags. And then the stand-up movement is getting upset by that. They're making announcements on their page, so they're getting a group that's on the other side of the street and it is a matter of time before these two groups. You know, basically we have some real serious conflict that's gonna transpire. And, and yeah, Jan, you're right. A couple members of the Proud Boys have come out. They are a, I don't know that they're a racist group because some of their members are black, but they definitely are a hate group. And so they've, they have come out here and I, and I unfortunately think it's a byproduct of kind of the environment that's being created out here where you have some groups that are protesting pretty consistently, and so now we've got other groups coming out here because they want to stand up against what they see as a threat. Doesn't matter which side of that you're on, it's, you know, but it's, it's, it's gonna come to a head and I'm, as a, as a person in public safety in this town, starting to get a little concerned.
Yeah. Yeah, you know, I think the comments from both you and Counselor Lee is, is kind of what worries me, right, is that you have, you have groups from both sides convening in the same area and, and having these kind of these counter protests and, and not a lot of positive come from that. We certainly don't need this, that, the kind of stuff we're seeing in, in the surrounding community come out, come out the Sandy. So Jordan, I, I, I hope, I know, obviously, we don't have Chief Roberts here, but I hope we, you know, I, I know that they're engaged. I know that Sean Lundry's been engaged. Oh, yeah, and I know he's been incredibly engaged with the groups, but obviously it's, you know, there's high temperature that both figuratively and literally going right now, and I think we just need to keep our eyes open.
Yeah, I mean, police have been actively involved with all of these demonstrations, you know, and, and been there to keep the peace and so far we've been really lucky, right? They've been peaceful even with, you know, each of the different events that happen with, you know, different folks that do come and demonstrate, but, you know, what was said earlier too, you know, that sort of happened towards, I think, later in the day, but, you know, there's a lot that goes on, on Facebook and sort of the, the back and forth that's happening on these community pages and, you know, it is, is sort of concerning when you hear these things. And then so far, we've been fortunate that when it comes to time for the event, things, you know, are relatively calm, but we do want to be vigilant and I appreciate the heads up and appreciate the comments that we heard during public comment today too because, you know, there is the perception issues that we need to work around. And I appreciate, you know, Counselor Smallwood's response to that about what this practice is and showing support of police. The city, you know, is not taking any position in terms of, you know, hate groups or anything like that. The council's come out strongly in support of the, the movement to, for racial justice and, and addressing inequities in our society, so. But beyond that, you know, we're a political organization and so, you know, we definitely don't want to get in the middle of any of that except for being, you know, protecting the rights of people and their, the right to protest safely and, and securely. So it's good to, good to know this. I'll pass it on, along to the police. They may even be aware, you know, of these conversations happening.
Yeah, I just, I definitely don't want any of our officers to be in a, in a position where they, I don't want anybody to get put in a bad position, let's put it that way.
Yeah, these are interesting times.
And the public either, the public either, neither side.
Yeah. I mean, we, you know, we get calls about, you know, why are we allowing protests to happen and everything, right? The governor's order shut down and, you know, you shouldn't be allowing these events and stuff and, you know, people have the right to assemble and have the right to speech and we're not permitting events, but people do show up and have the right to, to demonstrate. And it's kind of a difficult position, especially in these high, highly charged times where it seems like it's every weekend in every city, it's going through this. It's not a hard, it's not an easy time to govern, you guys. You're, you're doing really well.
All right. Well, thank you, everybody, for another long evening. Thank you for your dedication to Sandy and have a nice rest of your night.
Next meeting, we're all leaving at nine.
Meetings in September.
You can just log out, you know?
Get the rest of the month off. Have a good night, everybody.
Night.